No Adam's not gonna be here.
I think there's a school or something.
Whitehold is in another state. All we order, please stand.
Dear my father, we just thank you for this time that we can come together and to conduct the business of the city. We just pray that you would guide and direct us in the decisions that we make. These things we ask are in your name.
Pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pro call please.
Councilman Coleman?
Here.
Councilman Easter?
Here.
Councilman Reed?
Councilman Clark?
Here.
Councilman Becher? Councilman LaShaw?
Here.
Councilman Hart?
Here.
Councilman Whitehold? Mayor Nocke?
Here. Okay, I need to, two things. I'm gonna be amending the agenda, okay? Postponing A and B, okay? Under your...
Motion.
We'll end up doing a motion to amend it, okay? On A and D, okay? So I need a motion to agenda, uh, to postpone A and D. Need a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Alright.
Any opposed? Eyes win. Third thing is, I need the, uh, also replacing bill thirteen hundred with bill number thirteen oh one. I need a motion?
Motion.
I need a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Alright.
Eyes win. Next thing. I need, uh, any minutes, previous minutes, November thirteen twenty eighteen? Any changes, any additions?
No, we're all talking about the amendment. You gave a second set. I know we did, well, I got it, but I just wanted to make sure I'm ready.
Okay, anybody have any questions on the minutes? I need a motion for approval?
Motion.
I need a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Alright.
Any opposed? Eyes win. City Administrator?
Good evening, Councilman. Uh, I have a whole lot on the plate today. Um, in the Parks Department of Columbia Park, I guess most of you have driven through and seen what we've done up there with the lights. Uh, we decided last, last year that we were gonna try to light up the city, and I think the workers have done a pretty good job. Uh, we opened Columbia Park to the traffic last Tuesday, December fourth, and gonna keep it through until after Christmas, probably the week after Christmas, we'll start taking it down. Um, all the, you know, all the departments that have helped in that lighting up Columbia Park and lighting up Park Hills, uh, I wanna thank them for a job well done. I've never seen a bunch of grown people that act so much like kids, I think, sometimes when they were doing it and they come up with great ideas and... I don't know if you saw the fireplug that was shooting out wire, water supposedly, and it, it's been a pretty good, um, pretty good thing for, for morale and for, uh, the city and the citizens. I've had a, I hope you all have had a lot of comments on it. I know I have. Uh, they're very happy that we have something they can drive through that doesn't cost them anything. I've had people say, "We go through there every night to see 'em again," you know? And, uh, this is our first attempt, you know, there's things that we already realized we didn't do quite right, and we're gonna fix it for next year, and we'll add more to it. So hopefully, year after year, it's gonna get bigger and better. Um, yesterday, Rosner Roofing began the tear-off and replacement of the roof and guttering. Uh, I've been told that they should weather permitting be finished before the end of the week. At that time, we'll put lights up around here, we were waiting for that to get complete so we can light up City Hall. In the Street Department, um, they can, they're continuing to work on the Hanny Park bathrooms. Uh, that and some other equipment that has to be placed in there, benches and barbecue grills and that kind of items, uh, will be completed by December thirty-first. Uh, that's when the, uh, says we should have it done, we'll have it done by then. Uh, Lebat Materials is scheduled to pave what you already approved a couple months back. Uh, Norwood Street, Red Rooster Road, and the Senior Center Parking Lot. So all those things will get completed, hopefully all tomorrow. Uh, in the Police Department, we put out for bids for police officers. Uh, deadline was last Friday. Uh, we had three people put in their applications for officer positions. I'm hoping to have interviews before the end of the year. Uh, I'm gonna kinda wait because we still are looking for a SRO Officer, a School Resource Officer. Uh, so we posted it as of Monday, and we'll be getting some in on it. I've given them till the nineteenth of December, we'll probably do all of the interviews at one time. Uh, as far as the School Resource Officer, SRO certification is preferred, but if they don't have it and they're willing to go, go on to get the schooling, that won't be a problem. That is about all I have for today. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Okay. City Council? Alan, you wanna start with you? You have any good history?
Nope, not today. Nothing this time.
Don?
Uh, no, I had one, uh, stop sign that was down at Countryside and Marty Drive.
Still that one?
That's almost over. I saw that just a while ago, so I... But other than that, I don't have anything else.
Mr. LaShaw?
Uh, I've been through the park twice already, real nice. Next year, is there any way they can make the tunnel a little bit wider?
We can do whatever we can do.
When I went through with my truck, I was about that far from it, scraping the mirrors to find it.
But you made it.
Well, I made it real slow.
My problem was turning the lights off and not seeing the road.
I tried that, I first went in, I could see the signs said, and I lost the road.
I wanted to think we're gonna have to correct.
And I had a citizen come to me and asked if we considered a dog park.
Hadn't thought about a dog park.
They'd asked about putting it in Hanny Park, but I know you can't put any fences up down there. So I didn't know if we could look at the Lewis Street Park, the big grassy area there.
Is that the bar in the minutes?
What the?
Hanny Park, or there on Lewis Street, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, it's at that big grass area, it's not being used.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
How much land we have over there near Seven, on Seventh Street, down by the Golden Creek? Is that big enough for anything? Oh, good. Just land there with...
Yeah, maybe we need to look at both of them places. Is that, is it ain't for...
I don't have any land there, but they're...
I didn't know they'd be eating one of those empty lots over in the old area.
Yeah, that's true too, we got plenty of them.
Just put a chain link fence on it, I guess a gate is all.
Yeah, yeah.
Got some little bags for them to clean up after themselves.
There you go. Let's see, about putting it in maybe one or two places.
They've requested it, we could look into it. That's all I have.
Hey, what, uh, Park is awesome, you guys do a great job, that's something, you know, to see takes pride in the citizenship also. I thought it was just an exceptional job. Other than that, free play for a night, let's go. Okay?
That it? My turn. First of all, the group that put the park together done an excellent job. They worked their tails off. They created something that we haven't had in a very long time. There was even some public input, which is, was one of the people here, matter of fact, two of them. Uh, Ms. Nocke and, and Charlie Nocke worked on the thing. Uh, they didn't understand how to put 'em, and they both did it. As you know what happens in a city at all times, and, and they did, they made it look sharp. It looks nice all the way through. Uh, there are some corrections that we're gonna do, uh, but that's okay. It's our first time, it's not been easy. And I, I, it, it's, one thing's good about it's free. It don't cost anybody a nickel to drive through. And that's what means more than anything, okay? The public, all cities, citizens, Park Hills paid for it, okay? And, uh, there was businesses, asked me to put businesses in this time. Uh, there was some churches that called and, and wanted to put their church thing in. But I think this is something that the city needed to do, starting out amongst themselves. They needed to work on this theirselves. Uh, maybe next year in the Chamber, and, and I'm hoping some of the others will get together and, and make the park even more. We can't do it alone, no. But we've started, and now we just need to add to it every year, okay? But I do wanna thank everybody that did do what I asked them to do, and this board asked them to do, is to light up this park. And they've done a good job, okay? Okay. Take care of me, council. Next one is gonna be a... Bill number thirteen oh one. Since there have been some changes on this thirteen to thirteen oh one, according to the rules, I have to read the whole, uh, artist's, why, and then we'll vote on it, okay? Everybody understand? Okay, bill number thirteen oh one, an artist of the City of Park Hills, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute agreement with... Not sure I'm doing it right. Sarah Duffy, as city prosecuting attorney, on the behalf of the City of Park Hills, Missouri, be ordained by the council of the City of Park Hills, Missouri, as follows. Whereas the city council of Park Hills has decided it would be in the best interest of the city to enter into agreement with Sarah Duffy for services as prosecutor attorney. Now therefore be the, ordained by the city council of the City of Park Hills, Missouri, as follows. Section one, the mayor of the City of Park Hills is hereby authorized to direct and to execute for these, on behalf of the City of Park Hills, an agreement with Sarah Duffy for the services of city prosecutor attorney. Section two, this portion of the artist shall be severable in the event that any portion of this artist is found by the court to complete jurisdiction to be invalid. The remaining portion of this artist are valid unless the court finds that valid portion of the artist are so essential and inseparable connected with the dependent upon the valid, moot point portion, that is, cannot be presumed that the city council would be, would have enacted the valid portion without the valid of one or less of the court finds that the valid portion stands alone are complete and are incapable of being executed in this department with the less than intent. Section three. This artist shall be enforced and effective from after it is passed and approved by the city council and approved by the mayor of the City of Park Hills, Missouri, or as otherwise provided by law. Get a glass of water. Second reading, bill number one three oh one, an artist of the City of Park Hills, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute an agreement with Sarah Duffy as city prosecutor attorney, on behalf of the City of Park Hills, Missouri, be ordained by this council of the City of Park Hills, Missouri, as follows. Whereas the city council of, of the City of Park Hills has decided it would be in the best interest of the city to enter into an agreement with Sarah Duffy for services as city prosecutor attorney. Now therefore be ordained by the city council of the City of Park Hills, Missouri, as follows. Section one, the mayor of the City of Park Hills is hereby authorized and directed to execute for the, on the behalf of the City of Park Hills, an agreement with Sarah Duffy for services as the city prosecutor attorney. Section two, the portion of this artist shall be severable in the event that any portion of this artist is found by the court of contingent jurisdiction to be invalid or remaining portions of this artist are valid unless the court finds the valid portion of this artist are so essential and inseparable connected with the dependent upon the point position that it cannot be presumed that the city council would have enacted the valid portion without the invalid one or unless the court finds that the valid portion stands as one are complete and are incapable of being executed in part of it with unless they intend. Section three, this artist shall be enforced and effective from the, from and after its passage and approval by the city council and approved by the mayor of the City of Park Hills, Missouri, or otherwise provided by law. Okay. Do we have any discussion?
I have discussion, no, uh, Mr. Mayor. Um, first of all, um, I, I'm curious to why, uh, why the other candidate that's listed here, this Benjamin Campbell, is, why, why this was changed, first of all? Of what was the determination by the committee or whoever did the interview process to, to change that? I mean, I'm not in favor of either candidate over the other, so, but I'm just curious to, why?
Yes. What I did, Don, today, I got a phone call from the other gentleman stating that it could be a conflict of interest, and with him having a new boss coming into his job, that he would be best just to go ahead and step away. So what I did is, okay, Sarah Duffy was actually the first choice, but I decided to go with bringing you guys, Ben Campbell, for another reason, okay? Uh, there wasn't nothing wrong with Duffy, don't get me wrong. She's a very, 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 very good attorney, and she's a very good prosecutor, okay? Uh, but I had plans to bring to you on the other case that consisted of her, okay? Uh, that I wanted to discuss too. So, that's how that came about. It happened at four o'clock. Yes, I did make a decision. Yes, I did go home and get my paperwork just to make sure that's... I had three people that done the interviews, they made the decision.
Who were, who was?
Uh, I had the, I had the, uh, Mark Alparta, I had our court clerk, Tracy, and I had our, uh, police chief, the acting chief, and I sat in some of them, okay? And I only said that just, I'll just make sure that everything was right. They're the three that they picked to come and do the interviews. I don't get involved with it, I don't think I should have to. These people work with them every day, they ought to not be done, okay? So I took what they had, okay, and brought it to them. Then I made a fine. And that's how it came about. I think that's what we need to do, because I don't work with them personally. Mark said he don't work with them personally, but our court clerk and our police acting chief does. So I wanted to make sure that that is out and working, okay?
Ed, I have a question for you too, as well, I mean, on this, to, to change this bill from thirteen hundred to, to go to thirteen oh one, is that the reason for it having to read the entire thing, is that what makes it...
That, that, that's correct, since it wasn't, it wasn't made available ahead of time. We believe that that has to, certainly doesn't hurt.
And then the other thing that I have is, uh, was the current prosecutor notified of this tonight beforehand, or...
No, I did not notify her, anything.
That she's being...
But until, until this board makes a decision, Don...
I understand that, but it's on the, it's on the agenda to make that decision.
I know, hey, I don't like it either, but our rule says that I have to bring it to you to get your approval before I can do anything.
I understand that.
Once this board makes that decision, then yes, I have to notify, okay? But since she's here, I guess I can say we're gonna notify now. I, I, I don't like the way this, I don't like the way this is.
I don't think that's the right way to do this.
I don't either, am I right or wrong? I had that discussion.
I don't think that's legal.
That's what I was told, that this is the way it has to be done.
But also, just one other point...
I don't like it, but I like you, I don't like it neither. I think that you guys should make the decision, and then, then we take it there. But that anyhow, I have to do it in open session, I have to bring it to everybody out here, and that's what the law says.
I know that I have asked previously to this, though, what were the issues with the present prosecutor, and I really was never given anything, other than a vague answer of, "Well, everything's a mess," basically. Or, "There's all kinds of issues," and that's...
At this time, that's where I'm...
So it's hard for me to make a decision on the place.
That's your decision, okay?
That's my decision, that's right.
Okay, so what I need is, I need a motion to accept. If nobody else has any question.
I'll make the motion.
I need a second? And I need a roll call.
Councilman Coleman?
Yes.
Councilman Easter?
No.
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Councilman Clark?
No.
Councilman LaShaw?
Yes.
Councilman Hart?
Yes.
Okay? Okay. So is it time, you still got your job?
Okay.
Has it failed, okay?
Will I be allowed to address the council?
No.
Any close question if you're having one?
This is up to you, buddy.
Sure.
Okay.
How's your address?
Let's go. Yeah, if you'd like to, let's address your council right now.
Address it now, okay?
Yeah. No, I think you're welcome to think, 'cause I'm allowed to let it know. You can let it know if it runs off the loop, huh? I just was curious.
We have an ordinance to talk about what's supposed to happen, but it also, you know, the air...
That's, that's just... You're not breaking a law.
No, no.
What?
My name's Julie McCarver, I'm a current, um, municipal prosecutor. I've had this position since two thousand and thirteen. Um, I feel like I've done an excellent job. I have addressed questions to the mayor, um, after the bidding, uh, started. And he indicated to me that there was no specific problem with me, that I was doing a fine job. And every single time that I spoke into the mayor, that is what has been indicated to me. In fact, he indicated to me on very numerous times that my job is fine, that I'm doing an excellent job, um, that he's not heard anything wrong about the job that I have done. And therefore, I'm not sure why this is occurring. If, if the, the council does ultimately vote in another prosecutor, I will be the twenty-seventh person that this city has lost as an employee, um, since the mayor has, um, become the mayor. And I feel like this is a very serious issue for the city. I don't know why we are having this much turnover. We've had a lot of people with many, many years of experience, and it seems like, one by one, um, they've been fired or quit. And I, and I feel like, you know, the situation, um, that has been occurring has been very hostile. Um, and I have, I have never, never had any answers for why the city was putting out bids for a prosecutor job. Now, and I, I don't know if, if the council knows how attorneys are usually hired, but I've never seen prosecutor hired, hired by a bid as top construction projects are done. And, in my opinion, when that was done, it was specifically done so that the, the city could then hire somebody other than me. But yet, when I addressed Mayor Nocke over and over again, I was reassured I was doing a fine job, that this had nothing to do specifically with me, that there were absolutely no concerns about me. And the only thing that I was told is that this was financial. Now, if it is just a mere issue of financial, I did submit my application. I was not interviewed. There were only three people interviewed. I was not interviewed, um, and this person in bill thirteen oh one has submitted a higher rate than I have for the two dockets per month. So if the issue here is really an issue of, of finances, I don't understand why are we then looking at a candidate who is going to be paying more than I'm paying, being paid right now? For two, I'm paid one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for a month when there's two forty. And here, she's going to be paying one thousand three hundred and fifty, which is more. So if the issue here is finances, it does not make sense with what's happened. And if the issue is a specific issue with me, regardless of asking multiple times, I have ne, it has never been explained to me that there's been any issue. And everything was very smooth running within courts up until recently. I've never had a complaint, I haven't even had a complaint from a defendant who I've prosecuted. I, I feel like I have, um, a long track record of, uh, experience as a municipal prosecutor, which is different than being a state prosecutor. I worked for the City of Topeka. Um, I, I am right now the elected city prosecutor for Farmington. So the City of Farmington thought it appropriate to elect me to this position. And I, I don't believe that the person that is being proposed has any experience being a municipal prosecutor whatsoever. So I, I'm not understanding what the issue is here. And I, I'm not understanding why, other than there's been, there's been a pattern of everybody who has substantial experience in the city basically dropping off like flies, one by one. And, and that's all I can attribute to. I think, I believe I've done a fine job. Um, I believe I have the experience to do this job. I have been doing this job. And so if there's a specific issue, I sure would like to hear it, because I've been told over and over by Mayor Nocke that there's no issue, that I have done a fine job. And, and so I would like the, the council to reconsider this. I, I'm not even sure why this is happening, and I think it's very disruptive for the city to have so much turnover. I feel like people who are doing a good job, who have the experience, should be retained.
Is that all you got?
Yes, does the council have any questions, I'm waiting.
Next one? It's gonna be... It's gonna be, resolution one eighty-three?
No.
No?
No.
No.
You got the first. Oh, senior citizens, I'm sorry, I marked it up already. Okay. We have Mr. Dina Tini Lewis and Claudia Haster, the Senior Citizens Aid Association Board. Do I have any question? I need a motion?
Motion.
I need a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes, win. Okay, gee. Resolution of one eighty-three? I get in there, mine? Sorry, no, go ahead, start explaining.
Will you go ahead?
Yes.
That's okay. You need a council, Eric Knockie. The resolution for you tonight is for convening a tax increment financing commission to consider amendment, excuse me, to Highway sixty-seven corridor redevelopment plan, and the, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, you're done.
And the new tax increment development plan in that area. Um, this area is, uh, right now includes within those districts, uh, the Hefner property, what was the Plaza Pool Building, which is now a car dealership, and the entire, uh, development area that we're currently working with at, um, I can't remember the name of the street. Please help me, David.
I'm trying.
Sorry, I've got a lot going through, yeah, me too.
Fairgrounds?
Fairgrounds Drive, yes, thank you, Fairgrounds Drive. All that area was, was all one district. And so all that property was considered in doing redevelopment agreements, uh, that, that Hefners is currently under. So when the city was looking, uh, at doing, um, several different TIF districts, the city entered into an agreement with Gilmore and Bell and Seymour Regional Planning to put together, uh, several different plans on, on TIF districts, not just out there, but, but others throughout the city. And, uh, with that, uh, we, we deemed it best to, uh, alter that, that TIF district out there to separate off the Fairgrounds Drive portion. Uh, we, we can do that, and, and Hefners is the only one right now supporting itself, so we can finish out the TIF with Hefners, uh, as it's going on right now, and look at, look at creating a new TIF district for that area. And to do that, we have to reconvene that commission, uh, out there in that area to, to look at and consider the amendments. And approving this resolution will allow the city and, uh, its other entities, Gilmore and Bell and Seymour Regional Planning in this case, to contact those taxing entities, so it be the school, the county, and any other taxing entities that, that receive taxes off those properties, or will receive taxes off those properties. They will then, uh, give us a person to be on this commission. That commission then will, once we get the commission made up, we'll, um, schedule meetings, and then we'll go from there, considering those amendments, and those all will be then both office public meetings, and we'll forward those on to create the TIF district as previously planned with the city. So all, all this is really doing is creating, uh, convening that TIF district and commission, allow them to consider these proposals.
And this was prepared either by the planning commission or by Gilmore and Bell?
Yeah, Gilmore and Bell and, and, uh, both of them, Gilmore and Bell reviewed it, and Seymour Regional Planning developed it, so it was by those entities as well, I guess. Any question?
Do you have any questions on that? Okay. Resolution, we'll read it, okay? Resolution one eighty-three. Resolution convening the tax implement finance commission to consider an amendment to the Highway sixty-seven corridor redevelopment plan and a new tax implement redevelopment plan. I need a motion? I need to read the slide. No, don't do that. Okay, so, okay, I need a motion for approval?
Motion.
Need a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes, win?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving right along. City Attorney Report. Okay. Need a motion to adjourn, go to executive session regarding section six ten dot oh two one, one RSMO. Section six ten dot oh two one, two, RSMO. Section six ten dot oh two one, R three, RSMO. Need a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, did you get it? You got the first, second roll call.
Councilman Coleman?
Yes.
Councilman Easter?
Yes.
Councilman Reed? Councilman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman LaChant?
Yes.
Councilman Hart?
Yes.
Councilman Weinho?
Yes.
Okay? Got everything?